Welcome everyone to the Lee Schools TV Podcast. I'm your host, Adam Wright. Joining us today is Chris Patrica, school board member for District Three. Thank you so much for joining us today.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate it.
You're the first school board member that we've had on, so again, thank you. And so District Three, that's in the South Zone, right?
Correct.
Estero-Banita Springs area?
Yep, South Fort Myers and Fort Myers Beach.
Okay, and you got elected in 2016?
Correct.
And your term will go through to 2020, right?
Correct.
So obviously, the big topic that we wanted to discuss with you today is the half cent sales tax. We're just about a month away from the big vote on November 6th.
Yes.
And I know you've been one of the more outspoken school board members about the half cent sales tax. So I wanted, you wrote an editorial for the News Press a little ways back about, and you started it with talking about how you moved here from New York.
Correct.
You moved to Florida because you wanted to get away from the high taxes. You've said you're a fiscal conservative, and so you wanted to get away from the high taxes and move to an area with low taxes. And yet, you are, you know, a proponent, a supporter of the half cent sales tax for the school district. So it seems almost counterintuitive that a fiscal conservative who, you know, is in favor of low taxes would be asking, you know, our voters in this conservative area to raise their own taxes. So why, why support the half cent sales tax?
Well, you know, my ideology is definitely no taxes under any circumstances. But ideology only gets you so far. You have to marry that ideology with the facts. And I did move my family here six years ago. Our property taxes were going way up and our property values were going down. The public education system was failing my children. And we could have moved anywhere in the entire country. We chose Lee County for a couple of reasons. One of them was the quality of education. And the other was the fact that we have never in Lee County exercised our option for an additional SRO tax. So it is ironic that I sit in front of you today saying we need this tax. But when you look at Florida's tax structure, there is no income tax. Our property taxes are far lower than most of the feeder states, meaning people that move here from other states across the nation have high income taxes, high property taxes, and sales taxes that are higher than what we experience here in Lee County. So what we're asking for is reasonable, and it's also essential. So government's primary function is to provide safety and security for its citizens and to provide infrastructure for its citizens. And schools are infrastructure. Currently, we are failing to provide appropriate infrastructure to support the population and the growth of Lee County. And you can't build and maintain schools without revenue. It's really, to me, it's really that simple. So while my ideology might not agree with the stand that I'm taking on this issue, it's the right thing to do for students, and it's the right thing to do for the economic development of Lee County.
Now, I know this isn't necessarily, this is something that has been discussed for a few years now. Was this something that you, it took a while for you to come on board with? Was it something that you agreed with right away? Did it take a little convincing for you as a fiscal conservative to be on board?
I actually ran on a platform of solving the district's capital crisis, and I pushed for this. I asked the superintendent to look into it and figure out what it would take to get it passed and what it would do for the district. It wasn't just the half penny sales tax that I looked at or that the board or the district looked at. We looked at impact fees. We looked at property tax. I believe that if impact fees were increased up to 100%, that would bring in an additional $9 million a year. Property tax would bring in $39 million a year. And the sales tax will bring in $59 million a year. And that gets us closer to where we need to be, which is a meeting of $468 million funding gap over just the next five years. And the good thing about a sales tax is that it truly spreads the burden amongst everybody in the county. A property tax only hits property owners in Lee County, whereas the sales tax, everybody that buys a taxable good in Lee County pays for it, to include our tourists. Those who are just passing through Lee County will pay about one-third of the cost of this tax. And right now, as they pass through Lee County, they take advantage of the services that our graduates are providing in this community. So I think it's fair to ask them to share that burden.
Yeah, before we get any further, I wanted to just mention a few quick facts about the sales tax that we've kind of said over and over again. And we did a podcast with Dr. Atkins about a month or so ago. So you can find that on our YouTube page or Facebook page or on SoundCloud. If you haven't seen that, we talked a lot about the sales tax then. And we went over a lot of this, so I'm just going to go over it real quick.
Sure.
Since, so we are getting about $200 million less in funding from the state than we were about 10 years ago.
Correct.
And, but we continue to grow at a rapid pace as far as students coming into the district, about 1,500 to 2,000 a year. And I believe it's projected to continue for the next 10 years, that growth yearly. So funding is going down from the state, and yet, our enrollment is continuing to kind of skyrocket at the moment. So that creates a lot of challenges for the district. And as you said, the sales tax would generate about $59 million a year.
Right.
I think that's a conservative estimate, maybe. The average family of four would pay about an additional $64 a year in additional sales tax. If it went from 6% to 6.5%, it would be capped at, I believe, $5,000 of a large purchase.
Correct.
And as you said, yeah, tourists would pay about 30% or one-third of the entire revenue.
Exactly.
So how much, you mentioned that you looked a lot into other ways that generate, that would generate revenue for the district. And so it's your belief that this is the best option?
Correct. You said $64 a year for the average family. That's less than 18 cents per day. That's a burden that I think, if you look at Florida Gulf Coast University President Dr. Martin, he said that that's a cost that families in Lee County can absolutely assume. I don't think that a property tax is the way to go for a couple of reasons. First of all, they are wildly unpopular in the state of Florida, specifically in Lee County. Voters do not like to approve property taxes, and it only brings in $39 million per year. You mentioned a $200 million decrease in capital funding. That is a $200 million per year decrease in capital funding. And what we face right now as a district is a $478 million need. You can't, you can't fill that gap with impact fees or property taxes. You need a larger amount of revenue coming in every year in order for us to meet that need. And the other thing, too, is we're talking about growth. This isn't just about growth. This is about maintaining the 13 million square feet of infrastructure that currently exist in our school district. 13 million square feet of infrastructure. That's roofs and HVAC systems and ceiling tiles and gymnasiums that have water coming into them so that students can't appropriately participate in PE, for example. About 365 million of the revenue that will come in from this tax will go toward maintenance. A smaller chunk of this is actually going to go toward building of new schools. So this isn't just about growth. This is about the kids that are already here in Lee County.
We did a story a couple of weeks ago about kind of the maintenance needs at a lot of schools and showing that, you know, there are some schools that have old roofs that can sometimes leak and gyms that leak when it rains and stuff. And I heard a few people criticize the story, saying this doesn't make the school district look good. And it was kind of the point of the story. I mean, we want to be transparent. We don't always want to show the good things that are happening, but we want to, you know, it's kind of important to show people that this is what the money would go towards, is helping fix these maintenance concerns that a lot of our schools are facing.
Yeah, and these are, these are learning environments for children. That's what I think that we lose sight of sometimes in the politics of a tax. You know, it's all about pointing fingers at different government agencies, but this is about children in Lee County and appropriate learning environments for children. And when you boil it down to that, and that's what it's really about, the resistance is confusing to me. I don't understand why anyone would want to deny an appropriate learning environment for a child. You know, we're not talking about, you know, gold-plated roofs. We're talking about roofs that don't leak, you know? So to me, it just makes sense. And honestly, that's been the feedback that I've gotten from most of the people in the community. People who are not super involved in politics, but people who go to Kiwanis Clubs or people who go to Rotary Clubs or people who have community associations, and I go and I speak to them, to them, this is a no-brainer.
Can you talk a little bit more about that? I know you go to a lot of meetings and you speak at different organizations and clubs. Would you say that's the majority of people are in favor of it? What, is it a mixed bag? How would you describe it?
I think the majority of people who are not involved in politics are in favor of it. And even those who are super involved in politics, we're changing minds and hearts every single day. Because again, you know, this is a very conservative area. And I get that. I chose this area for that specific purpose. But sometimes ideology can really dictate the way people think when they're involved in that world of politics. If you can get to those people and get the facts to them, then they understand that ideology is not going to solve this problem. You know, we need additional revenue, and that additional revenue literally is for children.
So obviously, the money, a lot of the money would go towards building new schools to help with the growth. And as you mentioned, maintaining and helping repair or replace things at existing schools. The other big thing is improving safety and security at schools. I know you mentioned back in May, I believe, that you said it bothers you that you feel safer in this building, the main district building here on Colonial, that you feel safer in here than maybe some of our students feel in their schools. I think you specifically held up like your swipe badge that you have to use to get into the school and into a lot of the offices here. And you said, you know, it bothers you that you feel safer here than maybe students at schools. So how can the sales tax help fix that?
Well, $59 million of the revenue that will come in from the sales tax will be spent on technology upgrades for safety and security, specifically to include that card key swiper thingy that I use to get into the school. So I swipe my card and the door unlocks, and I walk through the door, and then the door closes securely behind me. There's no keys. There's no remembering to lock or unlock a door. It is automatic. And most of our schools don't have that technology, which means that most, most of the people in this building, not most of them, the people in this building are safer than our schools and our teachers and our staff are. The students, after Parkland, I don't think that anybody can deny that safety and security in our schools is absolutely necessary. And the beauty of this board that you have right now in Lee County is every time I talk about hardening the schools with upgraded technology like card key swiper thingies, you have Mary Fisher sitting next to me talking about softening the schools by making sure that our students have appropriate access to mental health services. So you have many different perspectives on this board. And ultimately, we're looking at how to best improve security and education for students across the board.
I'm glad you mentioned Parkland because I know that some people have maybe accused the district of maybe using Parkland as a jumping off point to kind of push more safety and security. But correct me if I'm wrong, the board and the school district had already planned on increasing safety and security before that happened, correct?
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, one of the very first meetings I had with the superintendent when I sat down with him, when I joined this board, was a conversation about safety and security in our schools. I'm a parent. I have four kids who are in our schools. And I have been haunted by the Sandy Hook shooting and just the terror in my heart when I think about one of my four children going through an experience like that or being a victim in an experience like that. Really, like I get a lump in my throat thinking about it. So I talked to the superintendent, you know, what's our active shooter protocol? What are we doing to keep our students safe? What are we doing that's different or proactive or progressive, forward-thinking in terms of comparisons to other districts across the state? And in addition to that, I have access to law enforcement leaders across the country. And I've been able to talk to them about some of the things that we're doing in our schools. And I have to tell you that what we're doing is the best that's available in the country right now. That the funding that we have in place for our SROs is odd when you compare it to other places in the country. Most police departments or sheriff's departments across the country outside the state of Florida take on the full responsibility of law enforcement, funding law enforcement in their schools because it is a law enforcement function. It's not an education function. But in terms of our buildings and our protocols and our active shooter training, we're doing the best we can do as compared to best practices across the country.
And I've been to, you know, Banita Springs High School a few times now, and that's going to be kind of serving as the model school, kind of moving forward. It's got a single point of entry, you know, one way in, one way out for visitors into the building. There's, you walk around the school, you can barely see any doors around the building. And one of the things I've noticed was that all the rooms that are on the first floor of the building, the windows are like 10 feet high.
Yeah.
And so that's just kind of an example of, you know, if the sales tax were to pass, money would be going towards building schools like that that are just in the day, the age we live in today. It's kind of what you need for safety for students. Kind of jumping off that, why should people, why should voters in Lee County who don't have kids in our school system care about, you know, voting for the half cent sales tax?
Well, I think there's, I think there's a lot of reasons. And I think my mom is a good example. My mom will be blankety five years old on Friday. If I say how old she's going to be, she'll disown me. But she has 27 grandchildren, four of whom attend schools here in Lee County. And she was, she was very much opposed to the tax when I first raised it with her because she, like me, is a fiscal conservative. And then when I talked to her about the facts and told her or explained to her the impact that it has on her property value, every single study you look at shows a direct connection between quality schools and property values. And many people who retire here, the value of their property is a big part of their investment portfolio. And so we don't want to see those property values go down. The other piece, too, is that quality education is the primary economic driver of any community. Quality schools draw businesses to an area, not just for the education of their own children, the business owner's own children, but for the education of their future workforce. And that future workforce is going to be providing services to the people that move here. So who's going to be administering anesthesia in the OR when somebody goes in for a knee replacement or for a valve replacement in their heart? Who's going to be driving the ambulance and providing emergency medical services in the ambulance as the patient is transported to the hospital? Those are Lee County public school graduates that are providing these services. And I would, I would think that anybody moving here would want to know that a quality education system is in place to train those people to do what can be, in some circumstances, life-saving procedures. In other circumstances, they are our future leaders. These are the people who will be sitting in my seat in the future and be our state representatives and our county commissioners. And they'll be making decisions when we're incapable of making those decisions ourselves. And the last thing I'll add is, people who move here are also fiscal conservatives. And if we don't get an additional source of revenue, we have to seriously consider borrowing more money. And borrowing money and paying interest is not a fiscally conservative approach to constructing and maintaining schools. If we get an additional source of revenue, we can keep that revenue right here in Lee County. It will go into buildings right here in Lee County. We will hire businesses that are located right here in Lee County instead of taking out certificates of participation that will pay interest to banks that are outside the state and sometimes outside the country.
So not only are we not taxing people's property, and we're asking, you know, tourists to help chip in as well, but it could potentially lead to increases in their property value.
Exactly.
And this wouldn't be unique to Lee County. I know we talked about this, I talked about this with Dr. Atkins when he was on the podcast as well. But there are five other counties, well, the other five counties in Florida that are growing like we are, I've got it right here. It's Duval, Orange, Hillsborough, Polk, and Sarasota County. They're growing at a rate similar to us, and they all have SRO taxes that they've implemented as well to help with education, correct?
Correct. Yeah, so in my work with the Florida School Boards Association, I've been able to meet school board members across the state and talk about, you know, their budgets and their funding mechanisms. And also through my work with the Florida High School Athletic Association, I'm able to meet staff from school districts across the state. And half penny sales tax is something I talk about with them frequently, and they don't know how they would function without it. During the primary, just, you know, a few weeks ago, 10 school districts in the state of Florida successfully passed a referendum for additional revenue, whether it be 0.5 mil, 1 mil for operating, or a half penny sales tax. And upcoming in the general election, we have an additional eight that are seeking reauthorization of either millage or half penny sales tax. And the thing that is important to understand here in Lee County is that to the south of us, we have Collier County. Collier County currently has in place a tax-neutral referendum where they move 1 mil out of capital and put it into operating. And so they're able to pay their teachers and their staff far more than we're able to pay our teachers and staff because we have the need on both sides of the house, both the operating and the capital. And if you look up in Sarasota, Sarasota has not just half penny sales tax, but they also have 1.0 mil for operating as well. So Charlotte County is constantly competing with them for quality employees. We're constantly competing with Collier for quality employees, and we're kind of stuck in the middle where we don't have this additional revenue. It makes it incredibly difficult for us to be competitive in terms of the employees that we're bringing into our district.
So I want to talk about transparency for a little bit. It's one of the main reasons that we wanted to start doing these podcasts in the first place was to kind of bring people in on the conversations that we have here at the district all the time, but kind of let the people in and let them hear the, all the facts and things that are going on here. And I remember that was one of, I was at the News Press Town Hall a couple of weeks ago, and that was one of the questions that they asked the school board is, do you think, do you think the school district has been transparent with the voters of Lee County about everything involved with the half cent sales tax? So why, what do you think about that? I know Pamela Rivera, I think, answered that question. But what do you, what would you like to say to people about how transparent the school district has been and why it's so important, especially leading up to November?
Well, I mean, any government should be 100% transparent. We at the school district have absolutely nothing to hide. And I think about this in a couple of different ways. I'm new to the area. I'm only six years old, so to speak, as a Lee County resident. I do believe I was meant to be born here because this is my true home. I love, love, love this community. That being said, my memory of New York and their school system and their high-tax way of functioning is very, very fresh. And I will not, as long as I'm in this seat, I will not allow this district to go remotely close to a high-tax, high-spending, wasteful system like I saw up there. In terms of transparency, we, you know, I have four kids in this system. And I have, I have no loyalty or allegiance to anybody at the district. I didn't grow up here. I don't, you know, have deep friendships or colleagues that have been with this district forever. The people I do have a deep allegiance to are my four children. And if I saw waste or mismanagement going on at this district, I would be the first person standing in front of a microphone screaming from the rooftops, you know, there's waste here and things need to change. I don't, I don't see that. In addition, all of the information that anybody could possibly need to make their decision regarding this tax is on our website. All of our audits going back to 2010 are there. All of our budget books going back to '03, '04 are there. I know that I and I assume other board members, I know staff is available to answer questions, meet with people. There's really, there's nothing we won't tell them. But getting people to show up and have the conversation and consume the information has been a bit of a challenge. I know that I held a town hall right around the time that we agreed to, or voted to pursue the sales tax. I held a town hall at Pine Woods Elementary School. Six people showed up. I couldn't get my own mother to show up. She hates it when I say that as well. But it's really hard for us to get the community to come and to consume the information.
Why do you think that is?
Because I think, I think people tend to show up and pay more attention when the tank is in the driveway, so to speak. You know, when the problem is, is right in their faces. What we're trying to do is we're trying to avoid a situation where our schools are in such a state of disrepair that the public is screaming about it. We're trying to avoid a situation where we have to move to double sessions or we have to move to split sessions for our students because we don't have enough money to build and maintain, build new schools that we need and maintain the schools that we already have. We're trying to avoid that, you know, proverbial tank being in the driveway. And so I think that's maybe why it's a little bit more difficult for people to pay attention. I think the vast majority of families in this district have children in our schools, and they're very, very happy with what's happening in their school. And it's really hard, I know, as a parent at Pine Woods Elementary, I was super focused on what was happening there. And it's hard to think outside the walls of the schools where...
To think of the district as a whole.
Correct, absolutely.
You mentioned double sessions, and that's something that I don't think we've really talked a lot about, the possibility of it happening. Can you explain what double sessions are and why it's, you know, maybe not an ideal situation?
Well, it's where we'd have children going to school in the morning and early afternoon, and then a second session of students going to school in the early afternoon into early evening.
That way, you could fit more students into one school.
Correct, exactly. And I'll talk about that from two perspectives. First, I'll start as a parent with four children in our schools with four different, well, mostly four different sets of extracurricular activities. I work, my husband works. I can't fathom how I would run my household if I had double sessions going on in my home. I just, it's beyond my ability to even imagine. But from a district perspective, it could be more expensive operationally, not could be, likely would be more expensive operationally from a busing perspective and from a staff perspective. Like how do you, how do you staff double sessions? How do you get enough teachers in the buildings to work those double sessions and to work the non-traditional early afternoon to early evening session? It's difficult to get professionals to agree to work those odd hours. So from an operational perspective, it would be more expensive, but it would also take a higher toll on the wear and tear of our buildings because you have twice as many students going through those hallways and using the facilities, which would lead to a quicker breakdown of systems and require even more maintenance.
And the school would be open for longer hours.
Correct.
Are we saying, are we talking like kids would be getting home from school at like 6:00 PM or somewhere around there?
I would think that would be on the early end of an estimate for children to get home.
Yeah.
And I know that when we've talked about changing bell schedules, there's been a lot of pushback from high school families and students in particular because a lot of them work. And so how do you work a high school student's work schedule around double sessions? And the thought of it is a nightmare. But what is potentially a bigger nightmare to me as I sit and I think about our options is borrowing more money. If we borrow more money, we have less money available in that capital budget to maintain the schools we already have. And I can't, in good conscience, ignore maintenance on existing facilities in order to build brand-new facilities in other parts of the county. So it's really a, it's something I think about a lot. It's something I struggle with a lot. And I have asked the superintendent to ask staff to forecast, at what point are we looking at double sessions or split sessions? Because it is a conversation that I believe this board will have in the near future if this additional revenue doesn't come in.
So going back to transparency, you mentioned the audits. You know, there's been some headlines over the past week or so. But I wanted to, you know, mention that, you know, we've been audited, I think, about four times over the past year. Three of those four audits came back overall very favorable of the district. There was one recently that had, you know, by the state auditor that had some criticisms for the district, that the district strongly disputes. Can you kind of break that down for us, what happened?
Sure. So I think that the processes that occurred with that audit were unprecedented and unusual. From what I understand, the final audit report was supposed to come out in March, but it didn't, it wasn't actually released until a week and a half, maybe two weeks ago. So in terms of the findings themselves, I'll use the first finding as an example. So I want to say it was $13.6 million that they said was used inappropriately.
The impact fee?
Correct. The use of impact fees to pay down debt. I've read case law on this, and I've also read the ordinance that is in place here in Lee County that was passed by our Board of County Commissioners. And the ordinance specifically states that impact fees can be pledged toward future debt and used to pay down debt. So for the, for the public to understand how this works, when we, when we build a new school, we project where the school should be located in the county based on students who are moving into the county and based on where students already live in the county.
It just requires impact fees, you know, generally are to be used for growth purposes, right?
Correct, exactly, exactly. And they are, they're levied by the county commission. The school district has no control over, over the levying of impact fees. So we look at where students are going to be moving at some point in the future. And we build a school, knowing that that school will serve not just students who live here now, but also students who will be moving into the area in the future. So when those students move in and their parents or their families pay an impact fee, that impact fee is used to pay down the debt that was acquired in anticipation of them moving here. Does that, does that make sense? So the ordinance that's in place at the county commission specifically says that impact fees can be used for that purpose. Case law that exists in the state of Florida specifically says that impact fees can be used for that purpose. I want to say there are 10 or 12 other districts in the state that use impact fees for paying down debt.
So there's precedent.
Oh, there's precedent, and it's a common practice across the state. And I was talking to a county commissioner about this very issue yesterday, and he said he had no concerns about the way we were using impact fees. He knows that every year, we send the county a plan, not only our capital plan, meaning where our physical facilities are and where we plan to build them, but also how we plan to use impact fees. We send that to the county every year. And he indicated that he suspected politics were at play in terms of not just this finding, but the timing of the release of the audit. And I believe the audit... And, and I believe the audit is an anomaly. I think if you look at the, all of the audits that are on our website, you'll see that there's zero corroboration for what was found or, or what was placed in this audit. And specifically, if you look at the OPAGA audit, the audit that was, was required by the state in order to even put this half penny sales tax on the ballot, that audit is glowing. I mean, it, it, the state told Evergreen Solutions, which is the independent company that conducted this audit, the state told them, you can't include any commendations in that audit. And anybody that knows auditing knows that that's a very strange thing to be told. That being said, they use the word commendation anyways. In their findings, findings are supposed to be negatives. In their findings, Evergreen Solutions said that the school district should be commended for the way they handled the construction of Benita Springs High School and the changes that they made in processes that were in existence under prior administrations. They found us to be efficient, effective, and economical.
Yeah, I've got, if you'll indulge me for a minute here, I've got some quotes that I pulled from the OPAGA audit, which was, you know, released in late August. It was a performance audit that included a review of program areas related to the construction of new schools, reconstruction and renovation of existing schools, acquisition of equipment, including safety and security equipment and technology. So, you know, right up the alley of what the sales tax money would be used for. And these are just a few of the, the quotes I pulled from the audit. What they said about how the school district was, you know, performing and using their money. It said, one of them said, "The extensive, the extensive use of checklists with one or more sign-off is evidence of the district's effort to ensure compliance with key federal, state, and local laws, rules, and regulations." It said that "The department-level budget process is rigorous and requires the departments to justify each budget request and show how the funds will further the district's overall strategic goals." It said that "The maintenance department has realized savings in energy staffing and contract costs by employing alternative methods for delivering its services." And also says that "The district is attempting to control staffing growth despite student enrollment growth and an increase in the total number of school saves." So that's just a few that I, you know, kind of going through it yesterday, you know, pulled from, from the audit. So, you know, very favorable audit for the most part for, from, that was the one that came out, I think, two weeks before the, the most recent audit.
Well, not only that, but many of the findings in that completely independent, objective audit contradict the, the findings in the Auditor General's audit. So, you know, when I have a, a county commissioner telling me that he smells politics in the release, the timing of the release of that audit and, and the content of the findings, I also have community leaders, community business leaders who I've spoken to about this audit. They have taken a deep dive into our budget. They're part of the superintendent's roundtable. And they understand that we are operating effectively and efficiently. They read the audit, and they too are, are claiming politics. And, and when you look at the operational audit that was released three years ago from the Auditor General's office, there is no finding in there surrounding impact fees. And we were using impact fees for that same purpose three years ago. So it's, I, I agree with the, the staff's action in strongly disagreeing with those findings and providing a factual basis for disagreeing with those findings.
We had several, you know, business leaders from the community come in a week or so ago to show their support for the school district. What did you, what did you think of that?
I was, I was really happy to see them step up and support the district. They've been incredible supporters of the half penny sales tax, but also supporters of our schools. And I think that, I think that's why this district is able to, to ask for the half penny sales tax in this moment in time, because so many of our business leaders have stepped up and said, they, they don't have enough revenue to support the growth. They don't have enough revenue to, to make sure that students are getting a quality education. And we, as business owners in this community, need graduates that we can employ in our businesses. And so they're, they're supporting education, understanding the economic, the economic benefits of that for the entire community. But, but they're also doing it for the right reasons. Like, sometimes it's hard for, for politicians to take, to take an unpopular stance, stand in favor of a tax when it's the right thing, because there's always that fear of, oh, if I take a public stand on something that's not popular, I might not get reelected. Business owners have to worry about their businesses and making sure that they have employees in their businesses that can help move their business forward. And that's what, that's what these, these business leaders are all about. And, and they're also, they're, they're good people. I've gotten to know them through this process. And it, it's one of the things that makes me love Lee County as much as I do.
Another thing I wanted to talk about was ways that the school district, kind of, you know, thinking outside the box, has, we've been able to generate some additional revenue. I mean, nowhere near the amount that the, the sales tax would generate, but just, you know, some examples of some things that we're doing to, to try to, you know, get a little bit extra money into the school district. And we, I had, we had Robert Cody, Executive Director of Transportation, on the podcast last week. And I think the Transportation Department was able to save over a million dollars just by kind of rearranging some things and some routes and, but, one thing that you mentioned during a, a talk you gave with the superintendent back in May was some additional things like selling, selling old buses and, and the naming rights initiative. Can you talk about some of the things that we're doing to generate a little bit of extra revenue?
Sure. That's actually, when I go out and I give these presentations, that is my favorite slide in the presentation, because typically, school districts bring in tax revenue and they spend it. That's all they do is ta, tax revenue and spend it. Lee County is finding ways, sort of thinking outside the box ways, to generate additional revenue. Over $600,000 has been generated in selling materials that are no longer useful to the district, like used buses, used technology, that sort of thing. Over $500,000 has been brought in by renting facilities to include cellphone towers. We've brought in over a quarter of a million dollars in naming rights on our auditoriums, our gymnasiums, and our, our stadiums? Did I say stadiums? Auditoriums, gymnasiums, and stadium. And $20,000 has been brought in through advertising on our website. Any businesses out there that want to advertise on our website, we're doing that now. So those are, those are big numbers, right? Those, that sounds like big numbers, but when you add them up, it doesn't come close to the 468, 478 million dollar need we have over the next five years. So it's kind of the district's equivalent of trying to bake sale our way out of a 478 million dollar need. Not that those efforts aren't important. They are very important. But it just illustrates, I think, that no matter how hard we, we try, no matter how many savings we find, no matter how much additional revenue we bring in, this, this need is, is real and it's big.
Is there, is there anything else, sales tax related, you wanted to discuss? Those are all the questions I have.
I think, I, I'd like to end, if I may, the way I end most of my presentations, which is talking about where this item will appear on the ballot. So this is going to be a very, very long ballot. There are, I think somewhere in the neighborhood of a dozen constitutional amendments that will be on the ballot. If you live in the Cape, the half penny sales tax will be the second to the last item on your ballot. And if you live anywhere else in Lee County, it will be the very last item on your ballot. So remember the Book of Matthew, "The last shall be first." Make sure that when you get that ballot, you turn it all the way over, go to that, that last item, vote. Vote on that referendum, and then turn your attention to the less important things on the ballot, like Senator and Governor.
Yeah. Are you, are you worried that, you know, a lot of people tend to just vote for the first couple of things and then turn their ballot in, like Governor, and, and then don't even sometimes make it to the very last page? They might not even be aware of what's on the last page?
I think that there's, there can be voter fatigue, although I believe that voting in Florida has become so, so easy. So I know that ballots will be mailed on Friday. I anticipate receiving my ballot on Monday. I mean, I, I, I think I'm, I'm not your average person. I already know who's running in every race and, you know, the text of every single amendment that will be on the ballot. I already know how I'm voting on everything, but pretend you're not me. You have weeks, you know, weeks with that ballot in your home to research every single item on the ballot. And I trust, I trust our community. You know, I know that, that they can recognize the need in, like I said, in my everyday conversations and presentations that I'm giving to, to the Kiwanis Clubs and the Rotary Clubs. They recognize the need. When, when we show them that, that graph that shows the decrease, the $200 million per year decrease in capital, capital revenue, I, I sometimes hear an audible gasp in the crowd, because they just, they have no idea that, that we're able to function the way we are with so little.
All right. So again, if you have, if you want to learn more, you can visit our website, www.lee schools.net/changeforchange. We have a ton of information on our website related to the half cent sales tax, some frequently asked questions, graphs, charts. All of our audits are on our website as well, if you want to check that out. So, moving on, if it's okay with you, if we, we could talk a little bit about you. So, for people who don't know much about you, can you kind of give us a little bit about your background, where you come from, before you, you know, join the school board?
Sure. I was born and raised in Massachusetts, so I am a Mass soul. Huge fan of all New England sports teams.
I'm glad you mentioned that, because I brought this today. My, my own Tom Brady jersey.
Are you a Patriots fan?
I am. Huge. Yes. So I figured I'd bring it as a little prop today to just show, you know, we're kind of kindred spirits.
That's really awesome.
My dad is from Brockton, Massachusetts.
Okay. Brockton always had a really good high school football team. Brockton was, when I was in high school 100 years ago, Brockton was typically the state championships, or the state champions, I should say.
Where in Massachusetts are you from?
I grew up in Shrewsbury, and before that I was in South Weymouth, so the South Shore of Boston, and then later Central Massachusetts. And it's funny you bring out this jersey in particular, because I-
It's kind of dirty, sorry.
No, it's wonderful. You can tell it's worn and loved. Robert Cody, our Director of Transportation, I refer to him as the Tom Brady of public transportation, because he's done such an amazing job of decreasing ride times for our students while saving money, decreasing bus routes. I just think, I, I, I don't think there's any higher, higher compliment than to be compared to Tom Brady.
Yeah, I think at a school board meeting a couple of weeks ago, you referred to Ed Matthews, Principal of South Fort Myers, as the Tom Brady of principals. So you've used it more than once.
I have used it more than once, but that, I mean, he really, I worked with him during the sheltering operation over there during Irma. And I don't know how much you know about Ed Matthews, but he starts every day with this loud sort of, "Welcome Wolfpacks", you know, PE, I'm sorry, Public Announcement System at the school. And he's super high-energy. And during that hurricane, he was calm. He was a calming force. And he was able to run a shelter in the middle of a massive emergency, just intuitively. And, and what I've seen him do with the students over at South Fort Myers High School, he knows his students, he knows his community, he knows what they need, and he's able to serve the students in that building in a way that, it, he really, it really blows my mind. And it's probably not fair to the other principals to call him the Tom Brady, because I know that we have amazing principals in, in all of our buildings. I've just had more access and exposure.
We've got some Aaron Rodgers and Peyton Mannings out there too, you know?
We do. We do.
No, but Tom Brady is the best. So I mean, just if we, if we can, just for a minute. Because something, you know, I like to talk about other non-school district-related stuff sometimes on these podcasts. So what, I mean, what do you make of what Tom Brady's doing at 41 years old, I think he is now? Still just running the league?
I think he's, I think he's really amazing. It's really, really exciting to, to, every Sunday, actually tomorrow night they're playing, the Colts, who used to be a huge rival. Not so much anymore now that Manning is gone. To see what he's doing is really, it's amazing. I don't know if he's superhuman. I don't know if he's a freak of nature. I don't know if this pliability stretching thing he's doing is actually working. Eating avocado ice cream, maybe that's working. I don't know what it is, but-
Never touches alcohol, yeah.
I am super excited that it is working. We're talking about Tom Brady, but I believe Bill Belichick is the true reason why the Patriots are as successful as they are.
I think the two of them together. If you had put in a different coach, it wouldn't have worked as well. If you had put in a different quarterback, it wouldn't have worked as well. They just are such a great matchup.
I think he's a genius. I really think he's a genius. And I'm not plugging his book, or it's not his book. There's a new book out there called, "Bill Belichick, The Making of the Greatest Football Coach in the History of Football." And I'm going to be listening to that book as I'm traveling around the state for my various school board and FHSAA activities. And I, I suspect I'm going to learn a lot about leadership in that book, because he is, he really is a genius. It's, it's do your job. And, and, you know, it's not, it, it's not an overstatement for me to, I compare Robert Cody to Tom Brady, because he's the quarterback of that. But, but really, Greg Atkins, Dr. Atkins, is the Bill Belichick of the school district of Lee County. I, I believe that he, as the leader of this district, has the ability to not just, not just move this district forward, but to really change education in the entire state of Florida. He is well-respected by his staff. He's well-respected by this community, and he's smart. He's got plans in place that will truly allow this district to move forward, and I believe will allow the state of Florida to move forward. And ultimately, the bottom line for him is it's always about decisions that focus on what's best for students. And as long as he, the staff, and the school board main, maintain that focus, we can't go wrong.
Man, you're a pro at tying it back to the school district every time.
I'm sorry. I'm really, I'm definitely one-
What do you make, what do you, what do you tell like the haters out there? Who, anytime you, you know, sing Belichick or Brady's praises, that they just bring up, you know, deflate gate or, or spy gate. That happened a long time ago.
I just say, I just say fine, that we have one ring for each one of those fingers. And none of those rings are deflatable, right? That's generally what I say to them. I am a trash chucker, but I'm not a trash chucker in, in anticipation of the game. You're not going to hear me talking trash about tomorrow night's game. You'll only hear me talking about it after, after we've won. And to the Miami Dolphins fans out there, I would say, you're ahead of us in the standings now, but please let's have that conversation in January.
Yeah, it's important to stay humble, because I mean, we've lost three Super Bowls as well, so.
Yeah. We have. We have lost.
So just going back to your background before we wrap things up a little bit, can you tell us about your, your professional background? What kind of background you come from professionally?
Sure. I, I have a law degree. I went to Seton Hall University School of Law. Go Pirates. And that feels like 100 years ago. I practiced in the area of estates and trusts for a while. And while I was doing that, the very last year I was doing that, I, I got a job as an adjunct professor teaching estates and trusts. And absolutely knew that that was my professional calling in life. The, the first time I stepped foot in front of a classroom, I knew that that was my professional calling. And then I left the full-time workforce in order to raise my children and continued to teach as an adjunct. And so I've been doing the adjunct thing now for close to 20 years. I hate to say I've been doing it for that long. Now I teach over at Florida Gulf Coast University in their Justice Studies Department. And I, I love, love, love playing even the tiniest role in what's happening over at that university. I believe that the students are phenomenal. Dr. Martin is really changing the direction of that university. And it, it really is a, a source of pride for people who live in Southwest Florida. So, before all of that, I was actually, I worked for the ACO Company, which is a division of Goldman Sachs, and I helped high-level executives in Fortune 500 companies manage their benefits. And I engaged in income and estate tax planning with them. I know that doesn't sound very exciting, but, but honestly, for me, in that job at that time, I was helping people save money on taxes, which aligns with my ideology, so I, I took pride in what I did.
All right. Chris Patrica, a force to be reckoned with. Anything else?
No, I really appreciate the opportunity to come on. This was a lot of fun. You know how much I love the work that you're doing for the district.
Thanks.
And I think I was a little intimidated coming in here, because I thought you might know more about the district than I do.
You keep saying that. It's not true. Well, thank you though.
I do think it might be true, and this was really a lot of fun, so thanks for having me.
It was. All right. Chris Patrica, school board member, District 3. Thank you so much for joining us. Again, you can listen to the Lee Schools TV podcast, where we put it on Facebook, YouTube. We're on Apple Podcasts, iTunes, and SoundCloud, Lee County Public Schools there. So thank you very much for watching and listening, and we will see you next time.